Oh, there we go. All right. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Holotus City Councils, June thirteenth, twenty twenty four. The time is seven P M. Please rise with me for the invocation and pledge allegiance. Father God, we stand before you grateful for all that you have done. For all that you are doing and all that you will do. Surely your grace is sufficient for us. I pray your blessing upon this meeting. Give us wisdom and understanding. Guide us in our words and our actions. May we be representative of what you have started and call this community to be. I pray, Lord God, special prayer for those of us that are physically afflicted, dealing with issues, be with that part of our family, Lord God, wherever they be, in hospital or at home. And bring them to a quick healing, I pray in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and one entity.
Again, we welcome everybody here. Appreciate your attendance and your concerns. At this point, we'll open our citizens to be heard. We have one. Nobody online is that correct? Okay, so I just have one person, Art Garner. Please state your name and address for the record, and three minutes are all yours.
Good evening. I'm Artie Garner. I live at one one five eight eight Sunset Boulevard in Beverly Hills. And my property borders on the property that's being, is on agenda, item ten tonight. In fact, most of it is going to border my property, and I understand that the developer and owner of the property current is planning to build seventy-one homes there, and probably a good seven of them will back up against my property. Maybe a few less, but it goes into a little bit of my neighbor's property. But I know this is just not a yea or nay tonight. You're just starting the process to investigate the possibility of annexation, if I understand that correctly. And so I'm not going to get into in particulars of concerns, but there are some, as you know, this same property owner has been developing, and it has caused concern in our neighborhood, but particularly those that are right next to it, of course. So what I would like is to be able to speak with you, Merritt, sometime in the near future or prior to any kind of discussions perhaps with them and and have those concerns, at least that I can understand if I have it right or not, and and anyone else that would be available to speak about it. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Certainly appreciate it. As you know, we can't comment at this point, but we do have item number ten on the agenda, so please stick around. A lot of those questions will be discussed, and I will be here all day tomorrow. Feel free to come by in a scheduled appointment or see me afterwards. We'll schedule a time. All right, absolutely. This time, unless there's somebody who wants to remove an item for discussion, which there is only one on the consent agenda, I'm looking for a motion, a second to approve consent agenda, item number three is written. So moved. Motion by merchant, sent by Cato. No discussion needed. All in favor of approving consent agenda, item number three is written. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. The mayor's report, text dot improvements. I will say that the biggest improvement is that they're actually doing work, and we are happy to see this from the Come to Jesus meeting we had the end of January, after two months of nobody showing up anywhere, and lo and behold, it turns out the position of the city of Holotus was correct, that if they showed up and did work, things would get done much faster than if they didn't. We are now at the point where today they closed off fifteen sixty Leslie crossover bandera and utilizing the turnaround lanes. I was informed just a few minutes ago that beware of that inside lane. There's still some pretty rough, I guess, some concrete culverts that haven't been brought up to full pavement height. But nonetheless, work continues, and we are expected to be substantially completed somewhere around this time next month with some cleanup items throughout August, but our turnarounds are working. That third lane is opening on a longer and longer stretch, although today we saw some weird one-lane shenanigans, but the end is in sight, folks. The end is in sight. Holotus Independence Day celebration, probably probably our biggest and most densely populated events. Roughly ten thousand people converging upon the Holotus Fairground Association on January third as we celebrate. That allows everybody to sleep. I'm sorry, I said January. Sorry. Still on the text that anger. January, July third, Wednesday, July third, and six P M. to midnight. There'll be some live music out there, our Holotus Community Area Band, of course, a phenomenal light fireworks show, and a great opportunity to come out and hang out with your family and friends and neighbors, and again, build what we've been trying to focus on, building a community of relationships. Invest your life in somebody else. It's much more worth it than trying to do life by yourself alone at home. But we will be broadcasting, understand, again, over the radio for people to end up parking over in the C V S parking lots and in the school parking lots, again, to be able to handle the overflow, and just want to welcome everybody out to that. This time, we're going to be moving on to the rest of our agenda items. Looking for a motion, a second to discuss, take action on item number five is written. Sure, so moved. Motion, motion by merchant, second by?
A second.
Okay. Okay, not a lot to this. The Bear appraisal district proposed twenty twenty-five annual budget is not a lot that we get to put input on, but we are asked for a vote of adopting it or not, so if you have any real specific questions, I'm afraid we don't have a lot of answers except for the hundred and twenty-eight pages in there. Items, a lot of numbers.
Just very generally speaking, I thought that it was interesting that there is no debt for Bear County or no debt service, I should say.
You are probably.
It's in the beginning here. It just said zero debt service. Of these hundred and twenty. Here we go. Budget expense, budget revenue, budget expense, one, two, three, third line down. I just thought it was interesting. There's no debt service, which I guess they don't have any debt or not much.
So because they own their own building?
They own their own facility.
Well, they own their own facility.
Yeah, they own everything.
Yeah.
So interesting. I just thought that was interesting. So. It's all that.
So the eight point eight seven increase got my attention. As I went through the report, I saw that the city is paying about twenty thousand dollars or less than one tenth of one percent for the collection of a little more than four point eight million. So this eight point eight seven percent budget increase for twenty twenty-five will basically cost the city an additional two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So I don't have an issue. That's pretty good.
No? Okay. All right, with no further discussion, all in favor of approving item number five is written. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number six, looking for a motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number six is written. For the appointments of board adjustment alternatives. You're on a roll, sir.
So moved.
All right.
Keep them coming.
Motion by merchant, a second by?
Second.
Cato, all right. Again, what this is, is our Board of Adjustment does not meet regularly, and so when an issue arises, it might happen as has actually has happened in the past. Where somebody's on vacation, it gets difficult to have a quorum, and so in order to prevent delaying citizens' right to appeal and be heard, we are establishing some alternate alternates. So these are two people that I have spoken with. They've they've applied and feel confident. On information there, if there's any questions about them. Again, this is not appointment to a board, just appointment to as an alternate so that they can serve, so that we can have on void.
I have no, no issues there. Backgrounds look good. Very qualified for what they're going to be doing. So have no issues.
Alternate one will be Cody Marshall, and alternate two will be Michael Kitieris. You second it? You have any comments?
No, I have no issues. Great candidates.
Okay. Think you know one of them. All right, no further comments. All in favor of approving item number six is written. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion and a second to discuss and take action on item number seven is written. Don't stop now.
Very well. So moved. Let's look at item seven.
Motion by merchant, second by Cato. All right, here we have three members that have been members of the community that have been looking for reappointment to the Ethics Commission. We have council member Sanders nominees, Robert Vera for place one, council member Song's reappointment of Shauna.
Ms. Song.
Ms. Song, thank you, for place two, and council member McGowan's nominee, Richard Acuna. Is that Acuna or Sona? Acuna. Okay, I see that right, for place four. Any comments, sir?
None. They all look like incredibly ethical people on paper, so. I'll give them the nod.
All right. Wow, easy tonight. Okay, all in favor of approving the three nominees for appointment and reappointments to respective places, one, two, and four? As stated, item number seven, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say nay. Motion carries. We do have action here on number eight, so we're looking for motion to second, the second and final reading and action on item number eight as written.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by merchant, second by Song. Again, as you know, this will be the second reading. We have been discussing how to appropriately word our ordinances to clearly state that lawn care maintenance does not need a permit. However, we need to define what that lawn care maintenance is, and that does not include cutting trees, which does require a permit, and adherence to the code and tree preservation code, et cetera. And of course, this in no way inhibits the homeowner or occupant, whether buying or leasing the property, from cutting their own trees or maintenance or any other items that do not require a permit. Mr. Merchant, any comments?
Well, it seems we've cleaned up all the things that Mr. Sanders talked about, and unfortunately, he's not here to discuss these, or is he online? No, no, he's not.
Yes.
But everything here that he asked for, that I wasn't thinking of, he, it's in here, so it looks, looks appropriate. Now we can, we can move forward.
Well, it it not only includes council member Sanders' recommendation of clarification, but also I had asked for a definition of what is a tree and what constitutes a tree, and I know it's tedious, and I know it was a lot of work for the staff, but I think we achieved what we needed to get. So thank you.
Sure.
No. No further comments. All in favor of approving on number eight as written. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Looking for motion, a second to discuss and take action on item number nine as written.
So moved. All right, let's do it.
Second.
It's almost like a picture, almost getting ready to hit a no hitter.
Well, I think we might have it.
Okay, all right. Of course, this is looking for approval of two variances. Okay, as is written in here, let's open it up for Mr. Merchant. Do you have any comments here on our setback on this property, on this issue being brought forth?
The setback isn't even close. No glad Mr. Delardo's here, right, Michael? You could speak to this a little bit. So like, it's not even close on these setbacks, and I drove by there. I didn't really see any huge issues or problems, but what what am I missing here?
So. No, other than the setbacks aren't, aren't having been met. We are called to say twenty foot from the property line. So I know that if you look at the photos, it can kind of be deceiving, because most people tend to look at the street and measure from there. I actually went out and measured myself. So if we look at the photos, basically, what you can do is you can kind of use the telephone pole as like your property line. So from that point on, you would have to be back twenty feet per gate.
Per gate, but then we, I mean, there's a picture in attachment B where all offenses are. They're all on the same line all down the street. I'm assuming the gates are on the same line.
Correct.
So this is one of those. Here we go again.
This is one of those where per chapter eighteen twelve, if you make any changes or modifications after the code, then you have to abide by the law.
And he says there's a well in the issue, but if we move back twenty feet past that well, then there's no issue. Am I wrong when assuming this?
I would, I would basically say that, you know, you would surpass that. Yeah.
Yeah, because as well as like eight feet back.
And and I think the other reason is that they also wanted to keep them uniform, like not have one gate further back than the other.
I get it. I get it.
Applicant here?
Is the applicant here? You are here, sir. Oh, good. Maybe you can come up and help us understand and get a better idea of what's going on, and so we can.
Yeah.
Help you.
The well is eight feet back, and if we go past that, then the service of the well, if it ever needs to be pulled, the pumps or anything, it's going to be pretty much unserviceable without, you know, pulling down the fence is what I understand. Because it's right there. It's like three or four feet off the the road, the asphalt, and the house is just, it was built a long time ago before the variances, and if we put that twenty feet back, that gate is going to be, you know, pretty close and eat up on the driveway.
Go back to the pictures, will you?
And the other gate is already in, correct?
Yes, sir.
Was part, was part of previous.
Yeah, the whole fence was redone exactly like the the old fence was taken down, but it was just falling apart and needed upgrading. So there was, they were unaware that there was a permit needed for fences at the time. So we're just trying to comply with the city of Holotus.
Understand. Thank you very much. That's certainly a valid obstruction that is not a readily removable item, you know, welder. Got to have that. That was my question.
Is it possible to do a variance? Can they fence wrap around?
This is what he is. He is applying for a variance to allow, basically, what what he's asking for essentially is to have a variance from the twenty-foot setback requirement for the gate, that the gate can be basically where it is now as opposed to relocating that gate. The other gate was just a rebuild of what was already there, correct? And so that's, that's part of.
So the the sections of the fence that are on either side of that gate, that gate B, where the, where the well shed is, if those are extended further along the driveway, you're saying that's going to make the well unserviceable?
Yes, with the big well truck, they have to pull the well piping below. Right, because they
But if you're not moving the fence line back, just the the gate.
Well, what it is, again, if you can go to the picture, the fence lines on the prop, the fence is on the property line, and then they've got a little setback for the for the for the gate.
Right.
But the setback isn't twenty feet, and so, and to tell you the truth, I still struggle myself with why they necessarily have that in the ordinance, but it is what it is right now until we change it or look at that. But what it would say is that that would set that would have to go back twenty feet and then have the gate there. Well, if that's where it is right now, they can access it, but if you put a, build a fence further back, now you're going to have a difficult time.
Getting the truck through.
So just for clarification, it's, it doesn't apply to a fence. It applies to a vehicle access gate. The whole, the whole purpose of that is that you don't cause back, uh, traffic backup into the road. In this case, I mean, it's a private subdivision. I, I, I don't think he would cause any kind of traffic backup, but that's the point, is you want that gate further into the property so that it doesn't form lines of traffic into the roadway.
Because I I drove out to the property as well, and I noticed you have a trailer, and it, if it's just a standard eight-foot trailer attached to a pickup truck, that could be sixteen to twenty feet length, depending on the size of a cab, you would definitely be sticking out into the public right of way when you come up to where the gate is currently located, and that, that could be a, a safety issue.
Yes, and and also, we need to think about the future. I don't think we'd be expanding these roadways at any point in time, but it's also to think about future road expansion. If we were to make that road wider, you know, we don't want that gate there.
So.
And we've had these come to council before, and each are examined on a case-by-case basis. We had, the last one was at Palotes Park Estates. I think it was Mr. Almost. Similar situation.
And I believe that was.
You've had two in Beverly Hills as well.
And I believe those were approved as well, correct?
Because it's, it's a case-by-case basis.
So again, that community is not a community that is undeveloped. It's all well, well-developed. There really is no risk of really, maybe a few houses being built on empty lots, but not anything appreciable. The traffic count on there is in the single digits, especially on Baxir, it's different than Beverly Hills Drive, as it were, where all the traffic issues are. So, you know, personally, I don't see a huge issue with this, particularly given the obstruction of the well, but we carry this over, Merchant, Councilor Song.
I, I just, this is why we have this process, and I just think this is common sense to grant a variance, especially since the lots to the left and right are on the same fence line. And I, I just think that this is reason to grandfather it. On the CAD, this house was built in nineteen eighty-two. And the city was formed in nineteen eighty-one. So, you know, who knows when the fence went up and who knows when the ordinance came up, but I think grandfathering is very appropriate in this situation and approving the variances.
I agree. I had first thought is, okay, it needs to move it, but I think you have enough justification to leave where it is.
Other comments? Okay, with no more comments, all in favor of approving the variance requested as listed in item number nine, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations, sir. Thank you for piling your variance, and I'm glad this situation worked out.
Item number ten. Looking for a motion and a second to discuss, take action on item number ten is written. So moved. Motion by merchant, and congratulations. Yes, we got a straight game. Second by?
A second.
Second by McGowan. So I'm going to take a moment and kind of describe a little the history and what has actually happened and transpired in this situation, give everybody a accurate history. This does deal with the, this is the application for annexation to the city of Holotus for section six A. This is not the acceptance and the actual annexation. This is just us accepting the application and, and pardon me?
The petition.
The petition, excuse me, that's a better word, and there it says it right there on the first line, the petition to be annexed. As you can see, the two areas there is a grand total of roughly ten acres, and that is referred to as six A. I wish we could scroll out of, can we scroll out a little bit there? So okay, the streets on the top of that map are Beverly Hills, and then all the other areas in the green are the various subdivisions of Bryce Wood, one, two, three, four, five, six, and six A. All of the areas have been previously annexed in the two thousand fifteen and two thousand eighteen annexation agreements that was previously done by city council. A little bit of history. Why did this become a part of Holotus? Why did they annex? Why did, why did Holotus accept it? And these are all great questions of which I can't give firsthand knowledge to the then council mayor's actions at that point. But all the area that you see in the brown to the one I'm looking at the map to the left, which would really be to the south side of the property. Excuse me, that would be to the north side of the property, right? It's just that in my head, yeah. That's all unincorporated Bear County or otherwise the infamous Davis Ranch, if you will. Unincorporated Bear County has really no restrictions at all. They could build a huge giant fireworks supercenter right in the middle of that community if they wanted, as was done. The other community right off of, pardon me, on Kyle Seal, if you ever dream about there. Because there's no zoning, there's no restrictions, there's no building code, there's no inspections, there's no, there's very limited of anything of anything. And that's why anybody can build anything, and that's why a lot of people want to build out there, not being incorporated, so they don't have to adhere to tree mitigation, our tree ordinances, sign ordinances, building code ordinances, and a quality that is established by municipalities. So what we see is when Bryce Wood was adopted and annexed into Holotus, they then became subject to the tree ordinances for preservation, and those that were cut down, which obviously a lot has to be cut down, that certain ones are replanted. Some, there just isn't space for it, and there's a mitigation fund that gets funded with that, but only up to a certain percentage. You can't just pay for everything, get rid of all the trees. You have to put at least fifty percent back in. And those funds go into a special fund that allows us to be able to plant trees in other areas where the city is responsible for putting those trees up. For example, huge drainage project that was done years ago down by Cedar Springs and Fossil Creek and Cutting Cross, which was done, was a four-million-dollar project. And catch the irony here. You have a waterway, and in that waterway, random spare trees that are not supposed to be growing there grew up because, well, seeds fell and trees grew. We are now responsible to make sure that those trees, which are causing the problem in the drainage and have to be removed, even though they weren't supposed to be there, we now have to replace those trees and plant them in appropriate spots, which requires buying the tree, excavation, planting them, and then maintaining them. Even though those trees are what is causing the problem that required the drainage project in the first place. Things that make you go hmm. So that's what we use mitigation funds, and if we didn't have those funds, then we'd have to pull them out of general budget. Also, there's a certain mixed irony. People love to have their trees. If we remember, there was a terrible, terrible moonscaping that happened up in Iron Horse Canyon roughly twenty years ago, right, right after I moved in, and that was truly an unfortunate eyesight at first, but what was planted back were trees that were healthy, straight, looked well, got rid of all the cedar, a lot of, we do have a lot of cedar, which is not a really great tree to have. Getting back to this project, if Bryce Wood was not annexed, all of those houses would still have been built. They just would not have been in the city of Holotus. And we don't make these decisions just to get tax dollars. That is part of the equation, but also being able to have, maintain, control the area, make sure that proper thing is done, make sure we have good boat, building code, and now we also have police coverage and fire coverage. So when we take a look at six A, if this does get successful and going through and gets annexed, then that unit will be part of the city of Holotus. If not, those houses will still be built, but it will be Bear County. And that means Bear County Sheriff, that means that they don't fall under regulations, that means they can literally whatever they want. And has a potential to be. I don't think they would actually build whatever they want. They would probably build the exact same things, but the issues that we would be dealing with would be the very same thing. Building construction, the same seventy-one homes, just whether or not would be part of the city of Holotus or not. So that is a little bit of the background. Hopefully, that answers some of the questions with people concerned about why would we even consider this? It's, it's really just kind of the final piece of what has been a master planned development and is going to be built one way or the other. But do we see it? There is definitely a lot to see. w- one way or the other. Uh but do we see it? There is definitely a lot to see is this being a benefit of being able to make sure that uh uh trees are handled in an appropriate manner and that those uh the mitigation fees will go to the city of Palotes as opposed to not going to anybody at all, uh as well as uh the benefits of people that do live in the area having continuous care with EMS and fire services. And of course, the tax dollars coming from that does pay for that, those services and more. So that's a little bit of the background, uh lengthy, apologize for that, but uh there's a lot of concern about that. It's important to have that information. Uh as we look forward at this, this is really just accepting the petition. After this, there will be a public hearing, uh and then there will be uh a process where we actually uh approve annexation and agreements. Uh but also go to P and Z for their uh zoning, which obviously would be zoned for. I'm sure there will be zoning for residential, uh but that's a process goes through the P and Z as well. So with that, I will turn it over.
I don't have any specific questions. I'd like to accept the petition to see what the process brings about.
Councilor?
Uh, no specific questions, just a comment, since this is my first petition for annexation. And you touched on uh a lot of the points that the staff report included is the pros uh for annexation, but also noting, you know, the con that the the future development will increase financial and employee demand to provide city services. Um, there's definitely a a financial benefit to the city uh through the annexation of the uh this property. But I hope that we also continue to approach it as a financial responsibility to help ensure that our staff and fire and police departments have the people and the resources they need to uh serve a growing community.
Uh, so valid points. Uh if you figure four people per house, we're looking at about two hundred and eighty people uh in context of the thirteen thousand we have. So uh you know, you know, we are looking at two percent increase, but uh currently, fortunately, due to the eight police officers we were able to add in uh proposition A. Uh and the current run volume we have with our our uh fire department. Uh, we have uh significant capacity to be able to handle that growth and all the other areas that we are also considering at this point.
Very good.
No issues. I'd like to sit and go forward.
Okay, Councilor?
Same here, just to underscore any confusion, those houses would be built no matter what. And there's so much confusion already in Bryce Wood about where they live when I go door to door on two different campaigns. Um, you know, with the San Antonio mailing address and they don't understand they live in Palotes. Um, some, not all. And then to have a donut hole in the middle of that community, that's Bear County, to me just creates uh just another layer of confusion. So um I think this is a really a positive thing and I just appreciate the hard work of the city. Uh working uh with the Bryce Wood developers uh to even get us to this point.
Alright. Well, with no further questions, uh the action item is to accept or deny the po- the petition uh for annexation. So all in favor of accepting the petition for annexation as discussed and written in item number ten, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Alright, uh at this time, we are going to adjourn into closed session in accordance with Texas, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four Personnel Matters. Specifically related to duties of city employees. Uh, no decisions will be made and we have no items afterwards, so uh feel free to enjoy your evening, but uh we are going to adjourn right now to closed session at seven thirty-five PM. We shall be back shortly.
Okay, all right, we are back in session. The time is 8:02. We had our executive meeting. No decisions were made. No votes were taken. That completes this evening. We thank you diehard fans, City Council for joining us and hanging to the bitter end. We are adjourned. It is 8:02.